Hey Alan.
How are you?
Good.
How's Sam?
It is.
Especially in this crowd.
Right?
Alan Dickerson.
Good to meet you too.
Alan's with GMA, well, he's with GMA too. And I'm gonna be retiring then to January.
Good thing.
Alan's gonna be taking my position. So he's in kinda the transitionary phase. Somebody else is taking his job, so we're...
Got a lot to learn, but...
Everybody's trying to...
We've got a few months to...
Taking different roles. So he's just gonna hear more of the learning experience. So he'll learn everything tonight, so if one of us can't come back...
In action, yeah.
Okay, well, um... We have all been here this month, technically.
Yeah.
I've been here this time. I'll kinda let y'all know. I better get some... Back out on our own.
And like, I mean, I can come back. Probably Alan probably won't come back. I think we were invited.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just thinking that we weren't invited.
These are taking it up. See what I can learn. I'll be...
Yeah. Now does y'all have people?
Everybody's playing ears. They'll run off. They'll... meetings. Just gonna have a first call. They told me.
Yeah.
That's the other issue here. We're here as long as we need.
We were at a college parks council meeting.
Yes.
We were making that so what time we're coming in June. So the boys were wondering me. I'm picking this time. You're picking that off. I've actually... I could see it till later time, but we ended up being suited. So we were like, yes! Well, I worked for the county before I joined the GMA. And when that county board of commissioners meeting generally did not last long since we had a different center. And they... When I was in the commission, you know, I had like special about anything add whenever we made it. Right. Now zoning meeting for another story, but I'm gonna have to...
Thanks. Y'all got a lot to thank you.
Yeah.
We'll be getting there. Thank you.
I don't know what happened, but she didn't quite do it properly.
She got away with it.
Yeah. I can't remember. I can't remember. I can't remember. I was like, oh, that's right. Oh, that's right. I was like, 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 oh, that's right.
Yeah. Although, not my first time speaking. Not a lot of the time you think about it. They'll run off. I've been to many meetings. Just gonna have a first call. They told me. So we're doing...
Yeah.
That's the other issue here. We're here as long as we need.
We were at a college parks council meeting.
Yes. Our kindergarten.
And we were making that so what time we're coming in June. So the boys were wondering me. I'm picking this time. You're picking that off. I've actually... I could see it till later time, but we ended up being suited. So we were like, yes! Well, I worked for the county before I joined the GMA. And when that county board of commissioners meeting generally did not last long since we had a different center. And they... When I was in the commission, you know, I had like special about anything add whenever we made it. Right. Now zoning meeting for another story, but I'm gonna have to...
Thanks. Y'all got a lot to thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I can come back. Probably Alan probably won't come back. I was just thinking that we were invited. Yeah. I was just thinking that we were invited. Yeah. Well, I worked for the county before I joined the GMA. And when that county board of commissioners meeting generally did not last long since we had a different center. And they... When I was in the commission, you know, I had like special about anything add whenever we made it. Right. Now zoning meeting for another story, but I'm gonna have to...
Thanks. Y'all got a lot to thank you.
Yeah.
We'll be getting there. Thank you.
I'm gonna be there. Oh, sorry. So what are you doing? Alan?
Many have disconnected their smoke detectors and/or have outdated batteries in them, also putting them at risk in case of a fire. Why not have the Canton Fire Department offer this service where a citizen can purchase new batteries and then call the Fire Department to have someone come out and replace the batteries in their smoke detectors at no charge? This will provide a safety net to our seniors and disabled and at the same time connect the citizens with the Fire Department in the city of Canton. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. I am sure that the Fire Personnel would rather replace a battery or two at a convenient time rather than have to respond to an emergency where someone has fallen off a ladder and has been seriously injured or where lives may be in danger due to a fire not being detected in its earliest stages. Here again, I believe this is another public service that the city can offer which would bring a lot of goodwill to the city of Canton at very, at a very little cost. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Pat Gold.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Pat Gold. I live on Main Street in Canton and I'll be very brief. I know that's a surprise. Given the controversy, confusion last year during the political campaign cycle about campaign signs, I just wanted to double check and make sure that all candidates running this, during this election cycle, received a copy of the signed ordinance as it pertains to campaign signs and request that if they have not, that they would receive that ordinance and hopefully that they will share those regulations with their volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brian Martin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Brian Martin. City resident for seventeen, eighteen years now and I know we're going to discuss the after-work hours for the hospital. There was a couple of questions that I had. If I understood the city ordinance is, the hospital was supposed to supply some type of paperwork or evidence that showed that they needed the work hours. I'd kind of like to know what they showed and why they needed the work hours that they're working. Also, I didn't, it seemed to me that the ordinance reads that they have to reapply for this extra work hours on a regular basis. I wanted to know if they were doing that. And then furthermore, I'd like for the Board to consider amending the ordinance with a line that would request if anybody wanted to work outside of work hours for this length of time, that letters should be sent out to residents of the surrounding area so that we could hear the reasoning and understand more what's going on and have a chance to voice our opinion before a decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and we will be discussing that item a little bit later on in the agenda. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mel Feldman.
Thank you, Mayor Hopgood, and thank you, Councilmen, for the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to just start out with the fact that we need to recognize the service of our police officers and our Fire Department is absolutely outstanding in the city of Canton and our community that I'm representative of, Hidden Lake Homeowners Association, as well as the people that live in that general area, Hidden Creek and Hidden Springs, which happens to belong to Holly Springs, do appreciate the service and the volunteerism and the commitment of the police officers of our city and as well as the Fire Department. One of the things that's happened is that you are aware of the fact that Hidden Valley Drive, a street that actually comes off of Ash Street and goes into two city streets, one which is Hidden Lake Circle, is a county street. And the county has prepared and cleaned that street and rebuilt that street and restructured the access from Ash Street. So it's in now, it's in excellent condition and ready for the city to take charge of that location. I would like to suggest that something be placed on the agenda to move relatively soon to get this street inside the city. The school buses, the cars that go up and down this street, the people that utilize this street are all city residents of Canton. That means the Senior Living Center that is at the base, 3,000 Hidden Valley Drive, the entire subdivision of Hidden Lake and the entire subdivision of Hidden Creek. Those are inside the city limits of Canton. We need this main road, which is really only three-quarters of a mile long, placed in the city of Canton. The other day, we had a massive tree as a result of the rain and the storms fall across that street. People were blocked, as well as ambulances, fire trucks and the Police Department from getting access to any one of those three, consider them subdivisions, because the Senior Living Center has a very large contingent of seniors and the constant visits by the Police and Fire Department down there to aid the patients if they're injured is very important. And this tree remained across that road for almost three-quarters of that day. Nobody in the city of Canton was aware of it. The city of Holly Springs said it doesn't belong to us. It did fall near their street, but nobody notified the county. People were calling 911. Finally, the Fire Department came and cut the tree just enough so that half a lane could pass by. That street, Hidden Valley Drive, needs to belong to the city. And when a 911 call is placed in for a tree that's fallen across, fallen across that road, the city needs to be responsible for getting that removed. I ended up calling the county myself and the county said, "We didn't know the tree had fallen across the road." I said, "Well, you better get it off there because literally a half a lane of traffic is blocked there and people are jammed up behind it." And that was after the Fire Department, thank God, came by and cut it. So that was something that needed to be addressed. The other issue that stands in front of subdivisions across this city, and everyone here should be aware of this, is fireworks. Now fireworks have been approved by the state legislature and unfortunately fireworks are another problem for subdivisions, especially during school hours or after-school hours, excuse me, from six until nine and ten o'clock at night. People firing fireworks during the week are disturbing residents that have to commute to Atlanta. They're also disturbing children that are being put to bed at nine o'clock at night. We had fireworks going off in our neighborhood at ten o'clock during a weekday, three weeks ago, by a resident that feels that he has the right to do that, which he does until twelve midnight. The only places that are off-limits are nuclear power plants. Hello? And gas stations. Well, yeah, I definitely wouldn't want to put off fireworks at gas stations. But what about hospitals? Do we have the ability to fire fireworks at a hospital because we're on a city street? That's insanity. Somebody needs to get on this issue and start pushing the state to get the legislature in sync with communities. And this is one community that's being disturbed by fireworks. I don't mind fireworks on a weekend. I don't mind fireworks on a holiday. And we're getting ready to come up on one right here with Labor Day. But I'm telling you right now, if you don't start taking this issue at the groundswell level, right here in the cities, it's not going to be addressed. And somebody has to do it. This state is under siege by these people and the lobbyists that got the fireworks law through did it in such a way that it does not address communities. And that's what you have here in Canton. Communities that are disturbed radically by fireworks going off at ten o'clock at night on a Wednesday night or a Tuesday night or a Thursday night. We've got to go to work in Atlanta. It's a long drive. And then these kids have to be in bed. They got to be up at six in the morning. So please, Councilman, think about something. I realize you're dealing with state legislature, but try to liaison into that group and find out if there's something that can be done or if there's something currently being done to adjust that legislation. Those are my two issues. I think that you've done an excellent job as a council. I'm very excited about the upcoming elections this year for all of you. I wish you the best and know that Hidden Lake, Hidden Creek and the other members of our subdivisions and the Senior Living Center will be supporting the Canton elections. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Regarding, I would like to make one comment regarding the Hidden Valley Street there. Would like to ask that our city manager have the staff take a good look at that and come back in October with a recommendation on that street because that has been an issue for some time and we need to get that resolved.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 8A, discussion of after-hours, northside construction noise. Mr. Peppers.
Yes, sir. We, we sat down with, I sat down with the hospital and their construction staff and one of the things that, that we talked about was the noise and, and, you know, given that the council had given approval for there to be work after-hours, they sent, yesterday would have been the first pouring that they would have had since the discussion came up at council the last time. So what the, what the contractor did is they had individuals in the neighborhood with walkie-talkies at the pouring time and had individuals on the construction site with walkie-talkies. And basically every time someone in the neighborhood heard something, they would radio and say, "What was that?" So that they could try to pinpoint the exact sounds and what was going on on the construction site that might be heard within the neighborhood. And basically what it boiled down to was that the contractor, looking at those sounds, looking at what was going on, felt that there were two or three things that they could do as it related to the site to get rid of those sounds. First of all, on the site, there are, there were, there were placed on the site some speed bumps as it related to construction to slow certain construction traffic down. Well, as the concrete trucks were finished pouring, they may not have their, they may not have their chutes tied down. So when they were hitting those speed bumps, it was causing the chutes on those trucks to make a loud banging sound. Well, moving forward, the contractor's going to instruct all of the concrete drivers that they have to tie their chutes down. They can't just leave them flapping around. It's got to be secure. Additionally, on the site, they didn't have a clear delivery path for, for the concrete trucks. So these trucks were using areas where there were speed bumps and, and, and what they felt like is they could come up with a better path that would take those trucks away from the speed bumps and cut down on some of the noise from that level. And then there were other things. For instance, trying to look at the mechanics of the pour to figure out if there's a better motion for the trucks so that they don't have to back up as much, which would cut down on the beeping sound. Trying to work with the, with the concrete trucks to flashlights to let people know that their pouring is, is near the end of their load instead of honking the horn. So the hospital has basically requested, the contractor's requested, to implement some of these between now and the next council meeting. I believe they have a pour on the ninth. To implement some of these between now and then and go back and see if the sounds are still there. They feel like that they can cut down significantly on the noise. The actual pouring of the concrete's not loud, it's the equipment around the concrete pours. And so they're hoping that by implementing some of these changes, they can significantly cut down on the noise that's being heard in the neighborhood adjacent.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Comments? Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Hey Billy, one of the gentlemen that came up on public input mentioned something that thought could be very helpful and that was information. I think some of the residents that are affected don't know what's going on and they hear these noises and it, it seems to me that if, if the hospital could let them know what the pour, you just told me the next pour date is the ninth. Today's, that's six days from now, so presumably there won't be a lot of noise at night until the ninth. And then if people could be prepared for it and just be aware that that's going on and, and take proper, put in earplugs, I don't know, something simple, but at least they would know when it's going to happen. And the worst thing you can do is pull a surprise on so many people don't know what's going on and I think that's a big, big problem. So if they can provide the information. It sounds like they're trying real hard to figure out what causes the noise and how to prevent it, so that's extremely important.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Huffman.
Today, I had the pleasure of going out and touring the site of the hospital. And for those who drive by it, you're not seeing just the tip of the iceberg of what's going on out there. It is just amazing how much is going on. You'll see a lot bigger place when you get out to see the actual site. So I'm glad to hear that this, this situation is taking care, looks like it's going to take care of itself. We, we are going to have some additional buildings to be built, so maybe that is a good time to, to, or even before, to have some type of presentation. I know that the hospital has quite a few presentations that are available on their website, but maybe we want to bring that here because once you see the magnitude of what's going on out there, I think it's over 300 employees or not for Northside but for the contractor out there right now and will soon rise as they start the other buildings to over, to close to a thousand. So I, it, this, it's just amazing what's going on. You, you'd need to go out to see it. I think that they would love to take any of the council people, could schedule to go out and have a tour, make a big difference. But I think that presentation, you had the people from G-DOT in here talking about highway, about the 575 expansion. This too would be very informative for our entire community. So I, I would recommend, Billy, that we see if we can do that.
Okay, Mr. Yawn.
I would also think it might be helpful for any of us or any of the, any members of the audience that have not heard, if we could enumerate some of the reasons why they're pouring at two and three in the morning. It's not just arbitrary choosing of time. There are reasons behind it and I think it would be important to list some, you know, let people know there are reasons why they're doing it. And also further, I have suggested to the people from Northside that it might be helpful to, on a regular, bi-monthly or quarterly basis, maybe come to council and give us an update on where things stand and what they plan for the next few months so that everyone's kind of on board and knows what's going on and what to expect. So I was wondering if one of the gentlemen from Northside would be available to kind of give a brief overview of why, why they're pouring at the times they're using.
Mr. Mayor, member of council, thank you for allowing me to address this. My name's Don Hosfeld, representing Northside. And if I might add, before I tell you the reasoning behind, behind that, to describe to you how many pours we have left, the timing and what we're trying to do to limit those pours that are in the morning as part of this education process. Right now, the hospital has eighty-four pours remaining. And what we've done is we've gone back to the contractor and asked them to go back and see how many that we can limit to the early morning pours. And this will lead directly to your question on why we must pour at that early in the morning. But of those eighty-four additional pours, twenty-four or twenty-nine percent of those will be in the morning. The rest of them are moved to the afternoon pours. And these will only average about two per week. Some of them will be, if you do the math, that's about sixteen weeks, so there will be some weeks you will have, you only have one early morning pour. Now those will end by December 31st, all of the pours. They will, they will, they will be done with their concrete work, weather permitting. I always have to say that, weather permitting. The, the nice part about this project is, is that we are going to be starting the first MOB, which will be 125,000 square foot building, and it will be open before the hospital actually opens the door. And just a side note, these buildings are going to be interlinked by tunnels. You'll be able to walk between one and the other without getting out into the weather. To pour, and the magnitude of scale, of course, you have a hospital that's 500,000 square feet, the MOB's 125,000, so you can see the order of magnitude here. The pours are 169 total pours for the MOB. And what the contractor's been able to do is only limit the early morning pours to 24 of those. Fourteen percent of those pours will be in the morning and they will only occur on the average of one per week. Okay? So, and that will, that will finish in July of 2016. If you, if, if you look at those dates, the Northside is going to build a 500,000 square foot office building in less than two years. That's, that's amazing. I think, I like, like the last was 22 months is what I heard. And then the MOB will be open for it as there is. So it's fast-tracking the project to get out of the construction process as quickly as possible and to get open and operating. Now, the reason that you have to do the, the large-scale pours is that these pours are 500,000 yards. If you can just imagine the magnitude of that. We had a meeting with the structural engineers, the contractors, we really did not turn a deaf ear to this comment. We dug deep to see what it is that we were doing and could we adjust it. And the 500-yard pours, the structural engineer has told us, weather is one of them, but it's not the only. You must have this to be a continuous pour because if the concrete ever sets up to where it is more, that it's not continuous, you lose the structural integrity of the concrete. So weather is just only one, but the, the, the bigger issue is the logistics of getting fifty pickup, fifty trucks to the site in a reasonable timeframe to where one finishes, one comes onboard, and when you're at 4:00 AM in the morning, you don't have traffic, you don't have anything that can detour those trucks because when you're pouring a 500-yard pour, a simple traffic accident would really lose the structural integrity of that pour and it would ruin the entire pour and that's a significant thing. So hopefully the education of the number of pours we have left and the effort that's gone in with the contractor to reduce those number of pours to as minimal as possible and, and to limit them to one or two per, per week will be, will be something that will be considered reasonable for the magnitude of that job. Did that, I gave you a longer explanation than your, than your question, but I'm, I'm known for that, I believe, so.
Mr. Rust.
I, I don't have a question. I just had a comment and, and I'll read this because it's a thought I had and I just wanted to share it. An ambulance makes a lot of noise, but no one who's waiting for one would ever complain about the noise. Residents near the hospital construction site may hear some noise over the next few months. When the dust settles, they will have a first-class life-saving facility across the street. Everyone needs medical help at some point in their life. The noise you may hear means that help is on the way. I only wish that hospital was building clo, being built closer to my home, I would endure the noise because one day I think I will need it and two or three minutes could mean my life, so thank you for building it and, and doing everything you can to minimize the inconvenience for the residents nearby. Appreciate that. Thank you.
I might add that the benefit will be is that Mr. Hayes has informed me that it'll, within the first 24 months, there will be a hiring of about 500 additional people for that staff to, just to staff the hospital and the hospital is growing as we speak. As we stand here, the number of beds, the opportunities are continuing to expand, so I'm proud to be a part of it and thank you for that comment.
Mr. Huffman, you, you got something to, oh, okay, okay. Anyone else?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay.
Sure. I, I would just like to say, I appreciate the, the impact of what the pours mean, but I don't think the noise is simply coming from the pours. I hear it every morning. And then this morning, for instance, I woke up at 10 after four, looked out my window and, I mean, it looked like the sun was coming up over the, the trees there. They were in full force working. Why at 4:00 AM? If they're not pouring, why do they need to be working at that hour? So could we limit the early hours to just on days they pour? I would just ask for that. I understand it, it, it's going to be a benefit in the end, but I, again, just to rush the job, to get it done, to, to, if that is what's making us work at 4:00 AM, I just don't think that, I think that's abusive of the citizens and, and so what, it took another four or five months to get the job done if they started working at 6:00 AM? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Well, I think, I think part of the situation has been somewhat of a communication problem from the, from the beginning. I know there's, there's obviously been some neighborhoods that's been disturbed to some degree with the noise, but I also see that a resolution, had communication occurred maybe a little sooner, maybe we would have got to a resolution a little sooner. But there seems to be now an effort to determine what the noise is and what's the best method of, of keeping it at a minimum in order to not disturb the neighborhoods, hopefully, as much as possible. And, you know, I think that's, that's what our, our, our job is, is to, is to resolve problems in the best interest of, of all parties concerned, if we can. And that's, that's what we're going to try to do and our, our staff will be working to, along, I'm sure, with some of the hospital folks to minimize that noise as much as possible and, and hopefully be able to continue on, on schedule at the same time. But we'll just have to monitor it as we go along and see, see how it goes, so. Anyway, anyone else?
I just wanted to thank you for coming forward because until we really know specifically what it, what impact it has on you or any people around you, it's hard to correct them. So thank you very much for stepping forward. It's important. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any other comments about that? Okay. Update on the Prominence Point request for city acceptance of streets. Councilman Yawn and Rust.
Mr. Mayor, this is not a voting meeting, but what we're going to recommend at the voting meeting in two weeks is to postpone any action on this request from Prominence Point because of two reasons. The street standards, we, we looked at everything that they presented to us and they're not up to the standards to be accepted by the city and the, the community doesn't have a reserve fund and no plans to build a reserve fund, so we're going to just postpone it if they want to come forward and talk to us, set a meeting and provide us with some plan that they have. The information we have right now, we're going to recommend on, in two weeks to postpone, so. And the council will vote on that to postpone it. If they agree, if they don't, we'll go something a different direction, but that's what we're going to recommend.
Mr. Yawn.
I just wanted to add that I do look forward to working with them to find a way for the city to be able to accept the streets and hopefully we will be able to find a way to have that happen soon.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Item 8C, discussion of the roll-off site administration. Councilmembers Rust and Goodman.
I'm talking too much, but hey, we had a proposal and because I was away at the last meeting, it never really came up for a vote, but someone proposed to me that perhaps a better solution is to make the roll-off site free to anybody that can prove they are a Canton resident. In other words, you bring a water bill in or something that proves that you live in the city of Canton, anything you bring to that site that's not commercial, this is for residential only, is free, no charge. So that just got thrown at me before this meeting, but, but at any rate, what we're going to, what we're going to do is take a look at this a little differently and, and perhaps someone else might have thoughts on what impact that might have, like, Richard, what do you think about that one? Just making it free. Because one of the things that, that we were trying to do, and it's not fair to, to Robert out at the site, is to make it discretionary, if somebody looked like they were really strained financially. Collecting $5 is not important to the city maybe, but it, it could be important to that resident that is in trouble financially. So what impact would it have on the city if we did it free and then we collect from county residents or maybe even open it up to anybody else? It certainly rates that makes sense to us. What do you think that might? I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Richard.
Oh, absolutely, I think so.
I believe it would actually help the overall appearance of the city and it would encourage people to not dispose of any non-household goods out in the woods, dead-end streets. It sounds positive to me. Uh, it, it sounds positive to me.
When I first came to Canton, I had all kinds of stuff for moving, and I took it to the old roll-off site and I thought it was really cool. Free, didn't cost a penny. It was, it was, it was just very much of a great service to me, anyway.
You know, you know, uh, Mr. Rust, I think this, uh, obviously needs a little financial analysis, to say the least, but it appears to me, you know, we have had over the past three years, and, uh, and people look at their water and, water and sewer bill, of course, garbage is on there and stormwater is on it, too, but, uh, we have increased our water rates four and a half percent, I believe it is, for the last, uh, three years now, and it's very, very likely that, uh, next fiscal year, uh, not the one coming up right now, but the FY seventeen, that we probably may not have to do that. Uh, at least an increase would be considerably less than that. And yet, to me, that roll-off site is a valuable service, I think, to people clean out their basement or, or, you know, uh, anything they need to take off, you know, they can take it. I think if it, if it could be a free service to city residents, I think it would be, uh, a re- a really good service, and we probably then would not, uh, you know, even, you know, I, I think we can afford to do that, actually, but that's, like I said, it'd take a financial analysis to do, but I think we can afford that for our residents, and also, and, I think it would encourage recycling, you know. Uh, also, I think that, uh, you know, we may wanna even look at, uh, making sure that all of our residents who really wanna recycle have an opportunity to do that, you know? So, that's just the way I feel about it.
One, one of the problems, Richard, as you know, is that the need for getting rid of garbage doesn't always occur in June when we have our free roll-off site, uh, in, in, in the parking lot, which we did this year. Well, I, I actually, I think we opened the site, too, free on that day, but then we made it o- free for the whole month. And I, I, you know, somebody that has to move in October, that, that garbage has gotta go somewhere, and, and, uh, it seems to me it would be a lot better for the city than I'd have somebody trying to use a dumpster behind Kroger or Publix or something like that. People do that, and it's, it's really not fair to our merchants either, so, I think there's a lot of things that would be cleared up if people could go and get rid of stuff no, no cost.
I think the fairness factor is one that would be cleared up, too, because there's no real fair way to charge when you, somebody comes in with a, a box out of their trunk or they come in with a pickup truck load or a box truck load. I mean, it's, it's so discretionary as to, since we don't have scales, you know? It's just, uh, a sense of fairness there that if, if they definitely were city of, of Canton residents and could come there and, and, uh, drop off those extra things they've cleaned out of their basement or wherever, then I think it, uh, I think we can afford to do it, and I think it'd be a good service to have. Uh, Mr. Huffman?
Yes, uh, it wasn't too far back in one of our meetings or several of our meetings, we were discussing the reduction in the, uh, fees for our trash pickups with, uh, waste management. I think it amounted to two dollars and some odd cents that we were taking off the bill. If we had that two dollars right now, we wouldn't have this discussion because that would, uh, surely pay for the trash, and that was brought up during then, but back then, council didn't feel like, uh, I guess that was necessary. They would rather reduce two dollars on a, uh, trash bill on the monthly bill, but, uh, that's the easiest way to take care of it, if you wanna do it free, and I so totally support it because, as I said back then, you gotta help clean up the city, just as, uh, Mr. Rust just said, that, uh, it goes somewhere, and this is the right place for it to go. It cleans the city, the charge of two dollars, or maybe it's a buck and a half, I don't know, uh, somewhat less, but it's a service to the city, it's, in many ways, to the citizens as well as the beauty of our city. So, uh, to me, that's the most logical, easy way to do this. Nobody really realized the two-dollar reduction in the bill on their trash bill, but anyhow, just, just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. Okay. The next item, discussion of the alcohol beverage excise, uh, tax compliance audit by Georgia Municipal Association?
Yes, we have some guests with us tonight from the Georgia Municipal Association, uh, that are gonna talk to us a little bit about, um, about how they can do an audit for us on our, on our, um, alcohol excise tax. Uh, it's been a number of years since we've had one done, many, many years, predates me and Mr. Ingram, so, uh, we wanted to bring this to you and let them talk to you for this, uh, for a few minutes. Lou Comer, Mr. Durden, and Mr. Dickerson are here from, um, from GMA, and I'll let them come up and, and talk to us. Okay? Welcome.
Well, Steve and Alan, I think, are gonna sit back here on the bench, and they'll let me do the heavy lifting here. Uh, my name is Lou Comer, and I'm with GMA, and, um, part of my responsibilities at GMA, I work with our services that we offer our cities, and we have been offering these alcohol tax compliance audits for, uh, since nineteen ninety-eight to cities, and the, uh, is an audit of mixed drink tax. It's to make sure that the retailers who have the license are actually paying you the correct amount of taxes based on the amount of alcohol that they sell. And, um, over time, we've done a lot of this work. Some cities are very proactive in this area. They will do an audit every three to four years because by statute, you can only go back three years. And I just wanna let y'all know, the work that we do is an audit, and of course, when you hear the word audit, I think people always have a very negative view of that. You think about the IRS or, you know, some other pretty heavy-handed group, but we try to approach this more as a compliance issue. We use it as an educational opportunity, not only for the city staff, because once we finish the auditing process, we will have trained the staff so that if Nathan and his staff wanted to, in subsequent years, do these audits and keep the work up, they could do that. And, uh, what we do, and I won't go into detail about the process, but we, it's a process that doesn't really require much effort on the part of your licensees, so this is not gonna be something that's gonna be burdensome to the business. Uh, there is an affidavit that we have the business complete. It's one piece of paper. It asks how much alcohol is in a pour size, and then if, once we've had finished the audit and produced our findings, if there are deficiencies and a, uh, establishment wants to question those, we work with your staff to handle, we call it an appeal technically, and we'll work with the city on, uh, with the city and with the, uh, business on that appeal. And, uh, I have brought some materials that I wanna leave with y'all, but, uh, we do something at GMA, we call it City to City. You may have seen these in our newspaper, and it's where a city talks about something that GMA has done for them and how it has worked for them. And this is a city-to-city that features the city of Hiram, which is in Paulding County, and they have twenty-two alcohol licensees, and like Canton, they, it had been a very, very long time that they had, uh, done an audit, and they wanted to approach this in a very friendly manner with their businesses, and so, in working with them, uh, you know, they let the businesses know it was gonna happen, and they explained to them that this is about compliance, and before working with GMA, I actually worked for the Gwinnett County Tax Commissioner, and we collected property tax, and the tax commissioner always liked to say she had a bigger obligation to the people who paid their taxes than the people who didn't. So I've always had that in my mind, and we were very aggressive with collecting delinquent tax when I worked there. And so, I always liked to tell our elected officials, especially when you do things like this, you're really helping your good businesses because primarily, your good businesses are paying their taxes correctly. It's the people who maybe either don't have the best staff, they don't understand what they're doing, so, it's an educational process for people. And that's the way that Hiram approached it. They ended up with a process that I think their businesses felt very good about. The city has taken on keeping this work up after we finished our work, and, uh, they've really viewed it as a very positive process. And in working with Nathan and Melissa, I have supplied y'all with a contract for the service. We've given you a not-to-exceed estimate, which is a little less than nineteen thousand dollars for us to do the audit of your thirty licensees. And, uh, with that, if there's any questions you have, I'm more than glad to answer them, and, uh...
Okay. Uh, Mr. Huffman, you have a question?
You were, uh, just touching on the area I wanted to talk to you about in the, uh, handout that we have. I think it's the third page on paragraph four, compensation. So it's nineteen thousand dollars, but then on this, it says a hundred and twenty-five dollars plu- uh, per hour. Is it nineteen thousand or you figure that many hours is gonna take to come up with a nineteen thousand dollar figure?
Yes, sir. Our fee is actually a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour, and we always try to give our cities a not-to-exceed estimate, and we actually have a, it's a spreadsheet that we have over time determined based on the number of licensees that a city has, how long it takes us to do all this work, and the work, without going into a great deal of detail, we're gonna have to go through the last thirty-six months of the returns that the wholesalers have provided the city, the last thirty-six months of returns of each of your thirty licensees. All that information is placed into a database, and then there's some analysis of it, so there's, there's actually a lot of what I would call very manual, time-consuming work in getting all this information to the point where you can actually do the analysis.
And that's contracted out to an outfit out of Texas?
Uh, the company that we use, they're called the Resource Professionals Group, and yes, they are, uh, from their licensing, they are domiciled in Texas, but one of their partners, a gentleman by the name of Brian Whitford, who does our work here in the Atlanta area, he lives down the Palmetto area, and another man that works for them lives in Gwinnett County. So they're, I mean, the company is, I guess, headquartered and licensed in Texas, but, uh, Mr. Whitford is actually a principal of the company.
So, would that be a team of people that come up here, or is that just Mr. Whitford himself?
Um, actually, the way we do the work, we will ask the folks in the finance department to, uh, send us all of the, uh, wholesaler reports, the licensee reports, and most of the work is actually done, um, at their offices. They don't spend a whole lot of time up here in the city of Canton.
So we don't have a lot of airfare and additional expenses?
No, sir, no, sir. And I thought the contract I had, uh, provided to Melissa had all that taken out because there, there is none of that, uh, generally.
Okay. One last question, and you might not know the answer, but Nathan may. How many licensees do we have that would be, you mentioned twenty-two for Hiram, do you know how many we have?
You have thirty.
Okay, thanks.
I think it was thirty, yeah, thirty.
Thank you.
And that's what we gave the estimate off of.
Let, let me ask a question, and I, with your experience with other jurisdictions, I assume that, uh, most of the results are that you collect a lot more than your fee. Is that a reasonable statement?
That, that would be a reasonable statement. I will give this caveat. We determine the deficiencies, and many times, the city may not wish to charge the licensee interest, uh, so it's, at the end of the day, it's up to the council to determine what kind of collections.
Have, have you done a jurisdiction in which you, uh, the city ended up, uh, via overpayments, uh, owing the, uh, uh, the licensees money back? I know what you would prob- there'd probably be some of that, maybe, in there, but overall, have you ever done that?
No, no, we haven't. Um, we have found some interesting things with some of these audits. We've, uh, believe it or not, found a city that was charging above the statutory limit for the tax, so we had to say we weren't gonna do that audit, so, uh, there's all kinds of different things that we find when we get into this work, I can tell you.
Sort of, sort of looks to me like we'd come out to the good, anyway, any, uh, chances of, of, of collecting monies that were due, uh, are certainly greater than what we're doing now.
Yeah, and, um, in the case of Hiram, they, I think, elected not to charge interest to their businesses, and I think their businesses felt really good about the process, and because you do the work and the city learns how to do the work moving forward, the businesses know they're being monitored, and they've seen an increase in their revenue because they did the audit to begin with.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine C, discussion of funding for remodeling of the utility department offices. Mr. Peppers?
Give me one second. If you have not had a chance, we did, uh, a se- uh, some remodeling downstairs for our, uh, community development group, and it's been very well received by our customers. It's, it's a much more friendly environment where you sit down at a counter and have a conversation, uh, with that staff. We would like to pursue some, uh, similar modifications to our utility billing area, and part of that reason is we keep adding more and more customers. We're seeing a lot more walk-in customers on a regular basis, uh, and, and before we went forward with some work, we wanted to make sure it was okay with council for us to do that, to go out to bid and, uh, and get some estimate, or at least get some estimates in on the work, uh, of what it would take to, to make similar modifications to that utility billing area. Uh, they bring in, you know, about a million dollars a month, uh, through that area, and there's some efficiencies that we can make on the, uh, front side of the window and also on the backside of the window as it relates to workflow with the, with the staff that's down there, uh, making certain things a little bit more secure, uh, and giving an opportunity for them to have a better opportunity for dialogue with the customers when they come into that area.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about that? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item D, presentation of intergovernmental disaster, disaster debris management plan.
Chief Floyd is here, and I, and I will just say, before I get started, Chief Floyd and Chief Mitchell have probably had the busiest week this week between incidents around the city, uh, but he's here and he can answer any specific questions, but the, the basics on this are that, uh, all of the municipalities in Cherokee County have come together to create a debris management plan, and the reason why this is so significant is if we have a disaster, a declared disaster, uh, a natural disaster, a tornado, for instance, having this plan in place gives us a better opportunity to recoup funds through FEMA, uh, for some of the costs that we incur and to help us plan on, on investments that we might need to make where FEMA grants might be available to us to improve things once it's done. So, um, I, our chief and, and many of the other public safety across Cherokee County have been working together on this plan, and this is, this is, uh, basically the draft of the plan that, uh, that they'd like to move forward with.
Okay. Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Some of the changes that we made, this plan is, is redone every five years. So what we've done is we've worked with Richard from the, uh, from the street department, and we have, uh, prioritized more streets. We've got them spelled out more specifically, so as, if an event comes, we've got it spelled out exactly how we're gonna clean them up. We've also got in the plan where the, uh, roll-off dumps or where the, uh, debris is gonna go to, we're gonna take it to the city street department as a temporary site. Uh, we have been in contact with EPD or Renee Hash, from the EMA, has been in contact with the EPD. Since it would be a temporary site, we're not gonna be violating the inner landfill, uh, agreements that we have. So we've got it finalized. There is just very few changes in here for the city of Canton, uh, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anyone? Mr. Huffman?
What's the biggest change for the city of Canton?
Most, mostly the streets, when you look at page sixty-three, we actually specifically spelled out priority one, Cherokee Street, to John T. Pettit Hospital Circle's half a mile. We, we put them down in priority, and the way that we come up with a priority list is me and Merrick got together and we used the, the same methodology that we use for snowplow. Uh, these are the way we plow the streets to keep them moving. If we have trees and debris in the road, we figured that is the, a safe assumption to keep those streets open.
Anyone else? Okay, sounds like, it looked like a lot of work there, I can tell you.
That was...
Yeah, thank you.
A lot of hours. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
All right. Item, uh, nine E, discussion of the proposed amendment to the hotel motel tax funds fiscal year twenty fifteen budget. Mr. Peppers?
Uh, revenues have done better in the hotel motel tax fund, and, uh, the CFO and I were sitting down the other day and, uh, and noted that, and so this is a budget amendment to actually increase the funds, um, uh, in the current fiscal year by thirty-five thousand dollars. This will allow us to do two things. One, uh, this will allow us to pay off the debt at the Canton Theater ahead of time. Uh, that was scheduled to be paid off by December. This allows us to pay that off, uh, now, um, by the close of this fiscal year, and also some funds to Main Street where... And also some funds to Main Street where they had some additional costs as it related to the Fourth of July activities. So we would request that adjustment in the budget through the budget amendment.
Anyone have any questions about that? It's a good thing, I can tell you. It's a good thing. Okay. The, let's see, the next item is also a proposed budget amendment, I believe, to the water and sewer fund.
I'm gonna let Nathan speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Mayor and council, good evening. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. It is obviously clear to everyone as we look about that development is picking up around the city of Canton. And to that extent, the demand for services in the water and sewer utility billing department has as well. This evening, I'd like to share for you, share with you a few statistics to keep in mind. Over the past five years, the total number of customers serviced by the utility billing department has grown over ten percent. Five percent of that, almost half, has been within the past year. This translates to over four hundred new net customer accounts during this past year. That's net accounts. Contrary to what I would have thought, we've actually seen the number of mail payments drop over the past five years. These have been replaced by obviously online payments. But also we've seen an increase in the number of mail payments, I'm sorry, walk-ins and phoned-in credit card payments that has demanded service from our customer service representatives. In total, the utility billing department has activated over sixteen hundred new accounts since October first, almost a year ago. A hundred and fifty-seven of these in the last thirty days. Now, that's a little contrary to what I just said, but these are total accounts considering that we have a lot of transfers, customers that disconnect service at one location and may move. But that is still a lot of service within the past year. The utility billing department processes each month approximately eight hundred credit card payments via phone. That is thirty to forty per day. Over eight hundred direct payments via walk-ins, customers that they see each month. Over three hundred transactions at the drive-through window at the back of City Hall. And two hundred, over two hundred payments left in the night drop box. As Mr. Peppers mentioned, the utility billing department is responsible for collecting over one million dollars per month in revenue for the city. And that's almost nine thousand customers today. It was just eight thousand nine hundred and change. The utility billing department is requesting for you to consider a budget amendment to allow for the hiring of a customer service manager. This individual would have knowledge and experience in not just customer service, but experience specifically with utility departments, customer service within the utility industry, as well as managing employees. We appreciate your time and consideration and hope you will give this, approve this request.
Mr. Huffman, you have a question?
Ms. Dang, do we charge anything to the citizens if they are using a credit card? Do we, like a dollar or something like that, particular, phone in or just a use of the credit card? I mean, it costs us to use it, I believe, to, to process a credit card.
It does, yes, sir. It, it does cost the city. And if they pay online via credit card, there is a charge. The third party charges them for use of a credit card. But when they call in to the utility billing department downstairs, we do not charge them a fee.
I would, I would think we ought to look at possibly implementing some type of charge of that. Not necessarily that I, I want to burden them by the dollar. I just want to take some of the workload off the, our, our staff. And that might deter some of that.
We have considered that in the past, sir, and we, we brought a proposition to council, if I remember, about two years ago. But there were some caveats to that that wasn't appealing at the time.
Well, should we look at it again?
We certainly can do that if council wishes.
Yeah. I'd like to, Mr. Peppers, that we do look at that.
Anyone else have a comment? Thank you, Nathan. Appreciate that very much. Next item, discussion of city records management policy. City clerk Susan Stanton?
That's me. The city doesn't have a records policy. We need one for numerous reasons. I looked at policies from literally around the world and came up with what I've given you. There's nothing specific in there that demands that any one department do anything because the records are all different. They will kind of decide for themselves and run their own little policies for dealing with their departmental records. Mainly what this policy does, it encourages scanning, labeling, correct labeling of records. And most of all, it's, it's the charter of the code. I never remember which. States that we're supposed to be following, the state archives retention schedules. Some of the departments do that. But it, it also puts, says in there that this is the records retention schedules that the city will follow. And that's basically all that's in there. It's very broad. I did send it out to all the department heads. I reminded them one time. I needed comments. I got no comments. So I assume they all love it.
Okay. So are, are you saying that it's in there that we will follow the state retention records requirement?
Yes, we have that in our city code that we are supposed, that's what we follow. Most departments are, are very cooperative. I've been around to all the departments and talked to them. But this puts it in policy, so there's no question as to how their departmental records should be handled.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a comment about that? Question? Okay. Thank you. Discussion of BARTO paving change order and the amount of fifty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, BARTO paving was awarded our, our work as it related to our Elmeg. And part of the work on Oakdale Road is requiring some additional work from their company. As they got in and did some samples in the roadway, what we found was just by basically going in and paving, we were gonna get maybe a couple of year fix. But there were some significant issues in parts of that road with the sub base. And so this change order allows BARTO paving to go in and, and fix that sub base as well as the paving part, which will hopefully give us a much better road in the section of the project.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Yon?
Is that related to the, almost like the sink hole that runs down the length of the hill?
Okay.
They're nodding yes.
Okay. All right. Next item.
Mayor, is this something we need to decide tonight or can it wait till the next voting meeting?
We don't have to decide it tonight. We've got a little bit of time. We should be fine.
That we, we would vote on that our next meeting?
Correct. I mean, you know, if, if we did decide to vote on it tonight, that's great because they can go ahead and move forward with the project. But if we need to wait because you'd feel more comfortable waiting two weeks, we can do that.
Do you recommend that we do this?
I think, I think I would rather spend the money in improving the road for a longer-term fix than just making an improvement that's gonna get us a couple of years.
And if we make a motion and vote on this tonight, it'll expedite the project and things go smoother?
Well, that's two less weeks we have to talk about it.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
May you?
May I?
You don't have to ask me.
Before a motion, I'd just like to make mention of some, BARTO paving conversations I've had directly with them. They will not be able to fully mobilize from the original lead date from the contract. They was anticipating mobilizing earlier. Now their start date would be potentially around Octoberish. So we can, you know, hold off on it, but that's why I at least wanted to mention it to you. There may even be a possibility if they could, you know, rearrange their schedule. But the earliest they was trying to say would be Octoberish.
So we, we should be in good shape to, to wait then. But that's a good question there because paving season is getting shorter, no doubt. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Rust?
Is there any possibility that we'd get bumped if we, if we're not in their schedule? In other words, if we don't approve it tonight, that we could get pushed back to the middle of October and November?
Well, I mean, the, the bottom line is if you went ahead and approved it tonight and something came up and they had to postpone another job, they might start on a part of the Elmeg.
We would be waiting.
Correct.
In a queue.
Correct.
That, that kind of makes sense though, doesn't it, to do that?
If that's the desire of council.
Now do you, now do you want to make the motion, Sandy?
I make a motion. We approve this this evening.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. All right. Item I, discussion of the city of Canton, Georgia Department of Transportation mowing and maintenance agreement.
Yes, sir. As I mentioned in our last meeting, we were basically sent a letter asking not to mow anymore on GDOT's interchange right-of-ways without an active mowing agreement. This is the agreement that would allow us to do it. I know Mr. Dyer has, has reviewed it. He may have some comments. But bottom line is, GDOT's only gonna cut certain spots once or twice a year. And this gives us the opportunity to go in and improve those areas in addition to what services they're providing so that they look good for the city and for our citizens.
Any comments?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
They only, they only cut about twice a year, GDOT?
Correct.
Wow. Will we be picking up the trash? Because there's a ton of trash on those right-of-ways. Will we pick it up before we mow?
This agreement is for our interchanges. And, and we basically are already cutting other right-of-ways, but this agreement deals with the interchanges. We're not going to be getting on to the interstate and dealing with those medians in between the lanes. But as we are cutting areas, yes, we'll be cleaning those areas as well.
Good, because when I was with Rotary, we'd go out and pick up on certain intersections. In particular, going across from the library all the way up to the light up there at Cherokee Boulevard, North Side Cherokee Boulevard. And those intersections, I mean, where the, and that's one of them. Man, you could fill the bags up so quick and if you run a lawn mower across, it's just gonna be.
If, if you're gonna cut, you might as well clean while you're cutting.
Amen.
Or just look at the tall grass and think of the prairie.
And one other last question. It's a small thing, but I noticed it today. Would we take a weed killer or something like that and hit some of the spots that is growing through the concrete and along the side of the, the road, some of the weeds actually just come out over the road and need to be treated, I think, with some type of herbicide to kill it?
If you'll send me those locations, we'll look at it. This does allow us to spray as well in the areas where we cut, which should help with, with scaling back on the amount of times it needs to be cut.
That, that is a retardant though and not a killer, right?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Yon?
Does this include areas we were not already doing? Or is this basically just giving us permission to do what we were already doing?
I'll let Merrick answer that one.
The areas actually include what we currently mow as well as the additions to the interchanges as well. So it includes everything. Now, keep in mind, conversations with GDOT that I've had, obviously there may be some changes with modi, modifications in future. So try to leave that open, trying to cover all bases upfront.
Mr. Grant?
First of all, I want to say that I think this is a great thing because those, those interchanges are very unsightly. And, and I know that Woodstock maintains their interchanges, I believe. And I always wondered why ours were so, so, so shaggy looking. So I did want to confirm, will we be utilizing our new mowing equipment and this won't require any additional equipment then?
We'll be using the, the equipment that we currently have. Now, having said that, we're gonna have to make a few modifications to our equipment. We may have to add hazard stickers to certain locations on our mowers as part of GDOT's routine requests for equipment on their right-of-ways. You know, we may have to change out blades a little bit more often in certain areas depending on how high things have gotten. But we're not looking to buy a new mower just to do this.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It, it bothers me that DOT, Georgia DOT, has neglected the road right-of-ways over the past few years. And it seems to have gotten worse as time goes on, worse and worse and worse. And it's, it's sad that they've pushed a lot of this maintenance off onto the local jurisdictions, which we have to do in order to maintain a, a good appearance of our right-of-ways and, and interchanges. But we're talking about a cost of twenty thousand dollars a year that the DOT ought to be doing. We shouldn't have to do property that is owned and maintained allegedly by another jurisdiction. But apparently we do. And it's, it's expensive, but in order to keep our city looking good, we're probably gonna have to do that. And, and we do need, we do need the, the interchanges or the gateway to our, to, to the core of our city looking as good it possibly can. So, I mean, it's not like we have a lot of choice, I think. But it still bothers me that DOT has, has slacked off on the maintenance of their interstate right-of-ways for, for some years now. And it hadn't gotten much better.
And I'll take responsibility for the issue because I was frustrated with one of our interchanges. And I told Public Works, go out there and cut it. And that's when we got the email from GDOT saying, don't do that. But it was in such a bad state that why would anybody want to choose to live near there or invest in a business near there? Just get it done.
Yeah, you're right.
Once, once we start doing it, I imagine it'll never change back.
I doubt that they'll come back and do anything. Once we started on a routine basis. They won't have to, so they won't come back. So that's, we're saving them twenty thousand dollars a year worth of work there.
Well, they're gonna continue to cut the median of the interstate and along the right-of-way on the interstate. But, but as you know, you know, when you're driving on the interstate, you may not notice as much on the sides or the middle. But when you're stopped at an interchange, that's really your first glimpse into a community. So if we can take those over and, and, and do a little bit more work there, then it's gonna be better for the city.
Right. I anticipate we'll get a thank you card from them sometime soon, don't you?
Maybe we should send them an invoice with a zero balance and show them how much we spent.
Mr. Rust?
Forget the thank you card. Let's send them a bill for twenty thousand. Can, can we bill the state government? I mean, can, could we send them a bill? We may never, never collect it, but, I mean, it would make a point. Seriously, I mean, you know, it's twenty thousand that we have to pay that they should be paying.
Well, it's just extra that we need to do that has to be done. I mean, you know, some of these things you just don't set well, but, you know, you gotta do it. And I think that's one of those things.
Are there any other cities that they're doing with this or are they discriminating against us?
There are a few cities that have been required to have mowing agreements. And my guess is there's a lot of cities that don't have mowing agreements.
So they get mowed more frequently, maybe?
No, no. I, I, I just think there's probably some cities that they want the agreements from so that they know exactly what work is going to be done. And in some cities, they've always taken care of their interchanges. And I guess there's not been a need for an agreement because the city's always done that work.
They want us to have insurance to make sure if we get hurt, they're not liable. Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right. Let's see what we got. Discussion of the, no, no, we got that one. Discussion of the request to waiver sign fees for the field of faith. This, once again, has been requested. Brandon Roberts has, has requested that we do that. I believe it's signed permits that they put out advertising the Fields of Faith event that occurs over at Cherokee High School. And I, I don't think there's been a problem in the past with that. And I doubt there'll be one this time. Mr. Goodman, you want to talk about that?
Yes, this is an event that we've, we've done this, we didn't charge them a fee for the signs since its inception. Very big event, always very positive. Everyone really enjoys it. It's, it really portrays the city in a good light. And I think we should follow that.
This is, this occurs, comes up on October the eighth, so we'll have, we have plenty of time. I mean, we'll be able to act on that at our next council meeting. Anyone else? Okay. Okay. City manager report, you have anything else?
I would just note that I noticed in, in a newspaper that there was some confusion about the, the council and the approval of the umbrellas as it related to the sidewalk coordinates. And an individual was questioning why we would limit signage on the umbrellas at Starbucks and some of the other places. That only impacts those umbrellas that are placed on public facilities like our sidewalk. That only impacts those umbrellas that are placed on public facilities like our sidewalks. It would not impact anybody who puts an umbrella on their own private property as part of a shopping center or or a restaurant strip center or a complex, so I just wanted to make that clarification public.
That's a good point, good point. Anyone have other, anyone else have any questions there? Okay. Do you have anything else, Mr. Peppers? Okay. All right. I believe we will have an executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation. Oh, I'm sorry, we've got one other, one other item. That really wasn't on the agenda, so I'm going to do it under the mayor's report. Mr. Yon and I were at the Chamber of Commerce meeting this morning, and this was where they gave out the awards for the mayor's challenge on recycling. We did not win that award, at least one of them. We actually recycled some two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-four pounds during that period of time, so, which is up considerably over last year, and Mr. Yon mentioned that, but we did get a certificate of appreciation for our participation and the amount of of recyclables that 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 we were able to collect during that period of time. So I think that's that's really good, and particularly the increase. So I just want to mention this, and I received this award, and Mr. Yon went up and received the plaque that we had that we did actually win something on this one, so I'll let him explain that.
Well, this annual contest, I'm not sure how many years they've been doing it, but it's quite a few, is for the Going Green Committee of the Chamber of Commerce, and it involves the mayors of all the cities in the county, and usually, per capita, Waleska comes out well ahead of everybody, and this time, unfortunately, Canton didn't win the overall contest, Woodstock did, which they had a significantly larger number than we did this time. But we did win in a category for the largest increase over last year's collection. We had a sixty-four percent increase over our collections last year. Last year, we collected one-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-two pounds. This year, we collected two-hundred-and-sixty-five-hundred-and-eighty-four pounds, and so they gave us a plaque for that distinction, and I will present it to the mayor to go to the city.
We'll make sure it is put in a prominent place.
Yes.
Thank you. You know, in conjunction with that, we certainly need to encourage everyone to recycle as much as possible. One thing that I that Mr. Peppers and I spoke about today or earlier today, and I don't know if anyone would agree with it or not at the time, but I I feel like, you know, right now, I think Waste Management will will give these little hand baskets that you can carry for recyclables, but you also have available the full-size, what is that, eighty-gallon or thirty, whatever? Eighty-gallon, then, full-size with a yellow top on it for recycling. Right now, we charge our residents for those, and I would like, and it, several years ago, we were charging like four or five dollars. That's when I came into office, we'd do that. We finally dropped it down and got it reduced, it's like a dollar and a quarter for one of the big ones. I'd like to see us provide those to anyone that would request that, having one of those, because I think the bigger container would encourage a little more recycling. So that's something I'd like for the council to think about in the next few weeks about doing that. Anyone that wants to recycle could get one of those containers free of charge, but...
Gene, I'm pretty sure Vic Knight has come here a number of times. I know he's come to River Green and made presentations that those larger containers are free.
I'm paying a dollar and a quarter.
Really?
You're free? Is yours free?
I've never, I've never heard of a charge.
I've got to check my bill then, okay.
I I never heard of a charge, you know, I'm pretty sure it's free, but we, I can ask...
The large ones?
Yes, absolutely. So I got the, I got the small ones, but I could get a large one tomorrow for free as well.
Maybe they included those in the Waste Management bill. That's what it is. If you would, please forget everything I just said.
I'm not sure.
I have to check my bill.
Businesses get charged.
Businesses get charged, okay, okay. All right. Any, I have a motion to go into executive session, discuss litigation.
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I don't think we'll be coming back out to vote at this point. If if anything, we, Jack, do you?
Yeah.
Okay. We will not.